Regular meeting of the Rock Ridge School Board to order. There's a binder labeled Board Materials available to the public at the front of the room. Meeting agendas are also available for the public at the front, and the public may access school board agendas online by visiting RRPS.org, tab District Information, tab School Board, Board Book. At this time, I will remind people to shut off their electronic devices or place them on mute, and I invite members of the audience and of the board to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now conduct roll call. Director Schoburg.
Here.
Director Anderson.
Here.
Director Tamero.
Here.
Director Sorkin.
Here.
Director Addy.
Here.
Director Lotiger.
Here.
Director Riordan.
Here.
Director Yuhan.
Here.
And Director Sunquist. We have nine of the directors in attendance tonight. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with an amendment.
I will make motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the resolution of Governing Board supporting Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for Evolith Gilbert.
Okay. And that was support by Anderson? Okay. There's a motion and support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. At this point, I would recognize visitor input, and today we did have Steph Lettska, who did want to provide some visitor input.
We can.
Schmidt and members of the board. I'm Steph Lettska. I'm here again on behalf of the educators of Education Minnesota Rock Ridge. I come to you yet again to ask for your support in helping us craft a contract settlement that we can all support. I want you to know, not a day goes by without a contractual concern coming to our leadership team. Not a day goes by without the differences between our two contracts impacting our work and our morale. Not a day goes by that I don't hear from one of our members who is considering leaving our profession out of stress and frustration. Yet, we have now worked nearly five months without a new Rock Ridge contract. Dr. Schmidt and members of the board, I want to ask you why. I know it isn't our lack of collaboration in working with the district team to creatively find solutions to the issues that separate us, that it isn't an unwillingness on our part to compromise, and it isn't because we don't understand the position the district is in financially. I also know that we remain ready and willing to meet anytime and anywhere to make this consolidated contract happen. But in lieu of recent events, we are truly wondering if the district is still willing to do the same. When will this be the priority? We want a settled contract. This district needs a settled contract. Our teachers are exhausted and discouraged. They feel overburdened and underappreciated. They are angry. They are upset. And yet, like I've said before, despite all of these disruptions and distractions, we continue every day to do what's needed to keep our students safely in school and learning. As our consolidation moves forward, we were asked to come together as a united district, and we did. We were asked to work collaboratively to align our programs and curricula, and we have. We were asked to be flexible during extraordinarily difficult times, and we are. We were asked to collaboratively support the Academy's model to produce this world-class educational program that we all hear about for all of our students, and we will. But sadly, the district has yet to take the single most important step into completing our consolidation. And so, Education Minnesota Rock Ridge educators, now ask you all one simple question. When will we see a contract that is worthy of our world-class educators that will truly unite Rock Ridge? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Moving to the consent agenda, I would ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist? Is a yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Lotiger, for reminding me. Under Reports, Agenda Item 5.1 is the VHS Principals Report. Dr. Marcia Nelson.
Hello, good evening. Hello.
Gotta turn the mic on.
Is the mic on? as presented or with an amendment.
Hello.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
There it is. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me tonight.
We accept the consent agenda as presented.
My first time speaking in front of you as the intern principal at Virginia High School,
Is there support?
No support.
Any further discussion?
and it's an honor to be here. Thank you. I have several things that I want to go through really quickly about some amazing things
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
that our students have been doing.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries eight to one.
Recently, Ella Lampa and Ava Think participated at the state tennis tournament.
Moving on, actually before we get to, well, I'll do this Form A when we get to number.
Our cross-country kids from Rock Ridge, our combined team, all had amazing things to say about what a great year it had been coming together, and we had boys and girls section
I'll just do it now. We have this resolution that was added to the agenda.
champs.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution of Governing Board supporting Form A application
We had three students who placed and had sections and ran at state.
in Minnesota State High School League Foundation?
We also had a conference champ, and they were the Iron Range Conference Champs as well.
Still moved.
Support.
There's a motion by Director Schoburg, support by Director Addy.
So they really, really did a great job this year, and all echoed that being together
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying, oh, it's a resolution.
has been a really great thing for them.
I'm sorry.
Greg Foster and his building construction classes have been working right alongside
So we do a roll call.
Correct.
Director Yuhan?
Yes.
Krause Anderson, which is very much in the academy model of working with people in the
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
community and doing the specific jobs that they might study in an academy model, and
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
I love that those kids will one day be able to say, "I helped build that school," and I think that those are stories that they will tell their children and their grandchildren for years to come. Our welding classes also got to visit the school and had a lot of great input about that and what they learned about their task of welding on the job site, things like just that they do it the same way that they're learning in school, and that was really cool, and that there's so many things involved and so many people that they have to talk to to make sure things are being done well and done right, that it really came clear to them that what they're learning pertains to what they might do in the real world. Our National Honor Society hosted its first induction ceremony last week, and they highlighted the NHS pillars of scholarship, service, leadership, and character, and know that National Honor Society is about more than just grades. They said that they are expected and understand that they are supposed to demonstrate qualities like respect, responsibility, trustworthy, fairness, caring, and citizenship in order to be good stewards of our school as NHS members. The Honors Orchestra recently took a trip to Superior, Wisconsin, to UW Superior, and our web leaders, Where Everyone Belongs, whose job it is to make sure that our seventh graders are connected here at school and welcomed and have a mentor role model that's in 11th or 12th grade. They have been painting pumpkins around Halloween. They have an event this Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. They have another event in December that they're working with their mentors and the seventh grade, and that's been going really well, and it's such a great role for our students to be in, to act as leaders. Our teachers are definitely experiencing a challenging time, and they do continue to work hard, give their all. Students everywhere are struggling with the post effects of COVID, and we know that it's really hard. It's not difficult to find research and articles from around the country about students and teachers experiencing the same things, and yet they continue to work together, to come together, working on their applied curriculums related to the Academy's career exploration and learning how to teach in an experiential learning format. So I am very, very proud of them. I'm very proud of our students, and I'm proud to be here in front of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
5.2 is Dr. Schmidt.
Thank you, members of the school board. I'm here to give you a couple updates on several events and occurrences. The first one is the current COVID numbers. Currently, we have 51 known COVID cases in the district. That includes students and staff. This is actually heading in the wrong direction. A couple weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, it was at seven. We're now at 51. When the board voted to go to the mass, we actually were right about that. We were under that, but right now where we are, we're at 51. Where are they coming from? To the best of our knowledge and ability, because you can't know with 100% certainty all the time, it appears that they are coming from home or they're coming from some other place. We do have some where it looks like they could have come from the schools, but again, we're not sure. But it looks like most of them are coming not from the school, but they're coming from other meetings, gatherings, family events. We're not sure. So that's just giving you an update on the current COVID numbers where we are right now.
Excuse me, Dr. Schmidt, do you know offhand where we are with vaccination status of staff, students, and particularly with opening it up to the younger students, where we're at in general with that?
No, because we are not specifically recording right now or keeping track of the number of staff who have been vaccinated and the number of students. It's not a condition that we're asking anyone to report. However, depending what happens on the federal level, and that's all in the courts, that could change, but for right now, it hasn't. The best indicator we have are the St. Louis County numbers, and the St. Louis County numbers are saying that 12- to 17-year-olds, the vaccination rate is somewhere around 48% in St. Louis County who have had at least one dose, so little bit less than half. These are high school students, 7 through 12. And then of the general population, all of them older than that, it actually is somewhere around 62% for the county, for St. Louis County. Both of those numbers are smaller than what is occurring in some other parts of Minnesota. So that's our best guess as far as what's happening right here.
Thanks.
Any other board questions on COVID numbers? All right, I'll go on to the next one. It's building moves. I just want to, this is mostly also for the audience who is listening tonight, present or on YouTube or video streaming it, however it may be. Again, we do have some major moves that are occurring after the end of this school year, and we will have, Jeff Carey will come talk to you as a full school board about some of the more details and procedures that are going on, but at this point, my purpose is to just keep it in forefront of everybody that we do have some major moves coming at the end of this school year. What are those moves? Here are the moves. We have, the Laurentian Elementary will be finished. Everything is still on target to be finished. The students from Franklin Elementary will be going into the new Laurentian Elementary, as will the fifth and sixth graders that are currently at Del Sheen. In addition to that, we also have the attendance boundaries come into play, the elementary attendance boundaries will come into play, and we will send out another reminder to parents, probably after, well, maybe I won't wait until the new year turns around, but the elementary attendance boundaries will come into play. This means that if parents in the old Evolith Gilbert district, where the attendance boundaries are, if they have been open enrolling their student for whatever reason to Parkview or to Roosevelt, then that would stop. They would then automatically go to Laurentian Elementary if they live within that attendance boundary. And so, we'll remind the parents again. Now, this is also, so everybody understands what will happen, open enrollment within the district is ending. If you live outside the boundary of the Rock Ridge School District, open enrollment still occurs. And so there are areas that we will try to funnel students in, so anyone, for example, from the south end of the Rock Ridge District, if they're open enrolling and they're elementary, they will go to Laurentian Elementary, for example. If they're coming from the north and they're open enrolling, they will go to Parkview and to Roosevelt. And so we'll send out some communication to the parents, but parents will still be able to, if they want, and if they have the ability, if their child is not in the attendance boundary for the elementary school, they will be able to, if they can, if they can get their child to the other site or to probably a bus stop that goes to that elementary school, contingent upon capacity, should be able to keep doing that. So if a parent, for example, lives in Evolith and they want to continue their child attending the new Laurentian, that they've been doing it for a while, if they can get their child there and their space, then they should be able to continue attending down there. And the same opposite, that is true. If you're an Evolith or Gilbert parent and you've been open enrolling to your child to the old Virginia District, you will be able to continue doing that as long as you can get your child to that elementary school or to a bus pickup and drop-off that goes to those elementary schools. We are not going to send buses into, and I want to be clear about this so the public knows this, we are not sending buses down into the Laurentian attendance area and having that bus go to Roosevelt or towards Parkview. We're not going to do that. Even though currently we're doing that, that is going to stop when the Laurentian Elementary opens. So that's kind of a major point that I think we need to keep repeating that, and we'll need to keep repeating that, informing the public and the parents exactly what will happen so we don't have confusion when we get to August and parents are trying to figure out which building their child is supposed to go to. Now, to add to a little bit of the confusion, we will be, in addition to Laurentian Elementary opening up, we also will be moving the Roosevelt students to the Franklin Building in Evolith. We're doing that because we need to start construction on the new North Star Elementary School. We need to move those students out of that building so we can finish the abatement and start the construction of the new building, which, yes, will involve taking down the old Roosevelt Building. So we do need to move those students, and the best place to move them is the Franklin Building. That's the building that's in the best shape of the buildings that is going to be vacant. In addition to that, all of the students from the Gilbert campus will leave that building. The elementary kids will go to the new Laurentian Elementary School. The seventh and eighth graders will go to Evolith Gilbert High School. So that will, in essence, become a 712 building next year. So seventh and eighth graders will be going to the Evolith campus, and so that will still be a very full campus over there. And then with the Gilbert buildings, then we'll start, again, this will be a little bit of a process we'll have to go through. We're still waiting for the city of Gilbert to officially let you know whether they are or not interested in purchasing the buildings. If they say yes, great. If they say no, then we need to decide what we're going to do with that building, put it up for sale. And I think I've heard that quite a bit, that you would like to see, if there's another individual, a private developer, should the city of Gilbert say no, to offer and see if someone else is interested in taking on the job of rehabbing, repurposing all of the building or part of the building. And then, so it's kind of like musical buildings. This is very unusual. This is going to put, I know this, and I hate to say this, but it's true, additional stress on your teaching staff. You heard what they said just a few minutes ago, Steph Lettska, their president. This will put additional demands on them. We are giving the teachers some time now to start boxing up. We're starting to move stuff into different buildings so it's not a scramble. We have had the Roosevelt teachers in the Franklin Building so they can just see the building. We'll get the kids there also so they can just see the building, because we don't want to wait until the last minute on any of these. So I'm going to pause right there, and mostly I'm saying this just as just kind of a reminder of what's coming up. We'll get there, we'll get done, and I will say this, I've said this in the context of school board, that there's no other school board in the upper Midwest that is experiencing these kinds of things. The same thing applies to the teachers. Your teachers are doing duties, and they are under stresses and pressures that no other teacher group in the upper Midwest is under. So when they're talking to you, it's legitimate. They are experiencing things that is not what a teacher would normally experience. So I do have to give kudos to them. They are experiencing things. They are going through things. They're doing their best. We will get through it, but we do have some major moves that are coming up. I'm going to pause and ask if there's any questions about the building movement upcoming or the upcoming elementary attendance boundaries, which will hit as of July 1, 2022.
I have a question. Why would we still honor the old open enrollment from the former Evolith Gilbert and Virginia boundaries and not just stick to the newly consolidated boundaries and attendance boundaries that we already voted on a few meetings ago?
And that's an excellent question, and the answer is, because we told the public that's what would happen. The only open enrollment that still exists will be if you can actually get your child to that elementary school. We're not busing them. It's only if you can get, the parent can get their child to the actual elementary school or a bus stop which goes to that elementary school, but that also means when the bus comes and drops your child off, you have to be there to pick up your child. The bus is going to drop off the kid, so you have to be there to pick up. So I'm not expecting there to be a lot of parents who continue to opt for open enrollment, but I would estimate there might be some.
So, Noel, I got to ask that question. So if I'm hearing this correctly, you would have a bus stop, a Virginia bus stop inside the Evolith Gilbert attendance boundaries? No?
No.
No, okay, all right, just so the...
No.
Okay.
But if a parent, for example, lives in Gilbert and their child has been open enrolled to, let's say, Parkview, and they want that to continue, normally their child would go to the new Laurentian Elementary School, but for some work-related reason, they want their child to go to Parkview. If that Gilbert parent can actually drive their child to the front doors of Parkview, that I believe will work.
And it's not just to, it's to and from.
To and from, right. And not all parents are going to be able to do that, but some will.
When you said the school, bus stop, I was kind of confused.
That is what we did say. So for example, if there's a stop, I'm just going to say by Target.
Midway or something like that.
By where?
Midway.
Midway or something like that, and they can get their child to that bus stop and that bus goes to Parkview, we can probably make that one work also, as long as they understand they have to be there on time to pick their child up when the day is over with also.
I still can't see why we would do that, even the bus stop thing, get your child to a bus stop of the opposite former district. Isn't that complicating the busing situation and the numbers on the bus? Why don't we just, we're consolidated now, we've done this for many other things, that we said something and things turned out differently. I see no sense in doing that at all. If you've been on the designated... have a bus stop, a Virginia bus stop inside the Evolith Gilbert attendance boundaries?
No. No.
No, okay, all right, just so the-
No.
Okay.
But, but if a parent, for example, lives in Gilbert-
Mm-hmm.
-and their child has been open enrolled to, let's say, Parkview, and they want that to continue, normally their child would go to the new Laurentian Elementary School. But for some work-related reason, they want their child to go to Parkview. If that Gilbert parent can actually drive their child to the front doors of Parkview, that, I believe, will work. Or they could take-
It's not just to, it's to and from.
To and from, right. And not all parents are going to be able to do that, but some will.
I just, when you said the school, bus stop, I was kind of confused.
That is what we did say. So, for example, if there's a stop, I'm just going to say by Target.
Midway or something like that.
By where?
Because there's like a midway or something like that.
Midway. Midway or something like that. And they can get their child to that bus stop, and that bus goes to Parkview, we can probably make that one work also, as long as they understand they have to be there on time to pick their child up when the day is over with also.
I still can't see why we would do that. Even the bus stop thing, get your child to a bus stop of the opposite former district, isn't that complicating the busing situation and the numbers on the bus? Why don't we just, we're consolidated now, we've done this for many other things, that we said something and things turned out differently. I see no sense in doing that at all. If you've been on the designated attendance boundary, when that building opens, that's where you go, period. And I do know, from my recollection, I believe I'm pretty accurate to say that I know that there were more total open enrolled Evolith Gilbert students to Virginia than vice versa. And it depended upon what age group they were, and what building they were from, and whether it was high school or elementary or junior high. So I see no reason to do it that way.
And that would be a board decision. I'm just answering your question, saying, this is what we told the public back when the surveying and all of that was completed. If you, the board wishes to do something else, you will have to take action and tell me what you want to do. But as of this minute, that's what we're set up to do.
But anybody like incoming kindergarteners next year would be, they would be going to the school that they reside in, correct?
Correct.
Unless, unless their parent wanted to transport them to, to the school or whatever that's outside of their district, or outside of their boundary.
Correct. Correct. And there was room at that school to take them, which I'm expecting there will be. However, I have to add that caveat.
That was the asterisk I was waiting for, that there was capacity availability for that student. If they were full, then they couldn't do that.
Right, right.
I just don't see that, you know, that being very popular when the new school's open.
Well, the only reason I can see why a parent would want to do that is, let's say they, they have somebody coming in kindergarten, and they already have somebody at Parkview in first grade. So they don't want to split their kids up and go to two different campuses. So we're trying to accommodate as many people as we can.
Well, and I, you know, I guess I would be, if I was a parent that was open enrolling my child into, you know, a Virginia school, and I live in Evolith Gilbert, and my child's in third grade, and they've made, established all those friendships, that would be hard for me to, you know, force somebody to go to a different school, when they've got established relationships with people already. That would be tough.
And that is going to happen eventually anyway. The Band-Aid gets ripped off slowly or quickly. And again, for the record, we've told the public many other things that have changed too. So I don't see that this, this should be any different.
Okay, the last item I would just like to preview, would be a better word than update. We have done a lot of different things in the district, and we've made a lot of different plans. You've had building names, you've had mascots, you have public votes, you've had major events occur. We're getting close to the time where, drumroll, strategic planning. Probably we need to start thinking about where that would go and how that would happen. So I'm not asking the board to make any decision here tonight, but I do want to bring it to your attention, that this is probably the next planning, large-scale piece that we should be taking a look at doing. And one of the early decisions you'll need to make, and I will come back to another board meeting and go over how that process, a little more details about how that would work, but one of the things you will need to tell me how you want to do is, many times when strategic planning occurs, and these are major things, this isn't what color are the drapes going to be in the new high school auditorium. It's not about that. It's major things, where you want the direction of the district to go, and you're the governing body for the district. And so one of the early decisions will be made, is that usually in strategic planning, the school board will engage a consultant. They'll hire a consultant, the consultant comes in, runs the strategic planning process. Usually that occurs because whoever they come in is perceived to be impartial. Now, however, sometimes you just have somebody internally who manages the strategic planning process. They're not making decisions, they're just managing it to make sure everything goes well and gets done. So you could tell me, you want me or somebody else to internally manage the strategic planning process and go through that. Or you can tell me, you want to bring in a consultant. What's the difference? A consultant, it's probably going to cost you anywhere from 10,000 to 40,000, depending who you engage, and what their pricing structure is, and what they say they can do for you. If you say you want me or some other internal person to run it, it's free. However, I need to add this caveat, that sometimes, again, they bring in an outside consultant, because they're worried about it being impartial. They want somebody who looks impartial. And so you know this answer better than I, and this is why I don't want you to make the decision on this night, but to start thinking about it, who you want to be managing the strategic planning process. If you believe that there's a lot of conflict in the community, a lot of people angry, a lot of people worried about is the old Virginia getting this, is the old Evolith Gilbert District getting this, then maybe you need to think about a consultant. If you think some of those wounds have kind of slowly gone over, and it's a little calmer, and that way, maybe you talk about having me or another person do it. But I don't want to come up here and say which one to go. It depends upon your, what you're hearing from the community and which way you want to go. So I'll come back, I'll talk about the strategic planning process, whoever, however you decide to do it. And then later, I will ask you also how you want it to be run and managed. Fair enough? Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 5.3, Mr. Speltz.
I don't know if he's here. Willie, are you, is Willie here?
I haven't seen him.
I haven't seen him either.
Well, I guess then I would just note that there's the dedication of the Baldrica Learning Lab and the Performing Arts Center, recognizing the Baldrica families' love for sharing the power of music with our community, and we will be forever naming a music learning lab, the Baldrica Learning Lab, in the new Performing Arts Center at Rockridge. The Baldrica Learning Lab will be recognized with a plaque to honor the family's lifelong commitments and contributions. This recognition was suggested and made possible by the Ben Deutsch and Steve Gennellini families.
Couldn't think of a better way to name it after you.
Right. And I think that everyone in the community is familiar with both Mr. and Mrs. Baldrica's commitment to music and the arts in the community, so that will be a wonderful way to honor them. Agenda item 6, policies. 6.1, consider revisions to policy 203.2, order of the regular school board meeting, and/or policy 206, public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings, and data privacy considerations in regards to visitor input.
Stacy?
Yes?
On Baldrica, did we have to approve that?
I don't know. Noel, did we have to approve that on the Baldrica Learning Lab?
Professionally no, because money is not involved.
Okay.
If you feel, because like you don't have to.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So let's see. I'm just getting to the policy here. So I don't know if anyone from the policy committee kind of wants to update us, there was considering a revision here.
I guess I, I just had a question, why this one is kind of presented differently than the ones that it looks like were just being asked to, the first reading, to approve as they have been, and then it looks like there's a group that, there's some suggested revisions that were being, and kind of what's the difference from this, the three groups?
This is an internal, as far as the way it seemed, this is more of an internal, maybe rendering down of the policy?
Marie, you might have to pull the mic a little bit closer to you.
It seems to be more of a rendering down of this policy, so that there isn't so much confusion, and everybody can get their way, so they can get to speak. And I know that there's people that are upset with the timelines, there's people that are upset that the agenda, they can't, they're confused that there's, that they can only speak on agenda items. It isn't, to a lot of people evidently, it's not spelled out well enough. And we just don't want any more conflict. We all agreed, I believe, that we all need a timeframe, though. And I think the three minutes works for me, that's fine, but, and again, we have to remind everybody that this is, is a privilege according to open meeting law. It isn't so much a right. We do want input from the public, but, so that seemed to be the biggest, you know...
Yeah, to reiterate what Marie had said, and to kind of answer your question too, Matt, is, the reason why they're separated out is because some of the policies, you know, we, as a committee, just, you know, we reviewed them and went over them and said, yeah, we'll, these will pass on to the board for recommendation to, you know, for the first reading or whatever. But as far as this one's concerned, it's been a topic of conversation quite a bit, and we just wanted everybody to have input on these two, rather than it just being the committee making that decision and bringing it forward to the board, again, because it's, there's been a lot of discussion about it. And one of the things that I brought up, and I still feel is confusing, is the form. You know, when, when people are allowed to speak on items that aren't on the agenda, and when they are allowed to approach us about a topic, and, you know, there's no interaction, it just seems like there's confusion out there. So maybe more clarity, maybe we need two forms. And also, I think, like, getting on to the agenda is something that we should continue to have at the discretion of the board chair. But as far as visitor input goes, if we allow people to speak on topics that aren't on the agenda, we definitely need to have guidelines as far as how long they can speak and how many speakers we have, because we do need to conduct business at our meetings. But we also don't want to have people feeling like we don't care what they have to say, because that's not the intention.
No.
The intention is, we do have, we do have a meeting that we need to run. And, you know, there are things that come up, you know, it seems like every meeting, and we don't need to revisit that every time as well.
Exactly. And that's what we talked about at the committee, and I don't know-
You might just have to pull it closer.
Yeah, you gotta pull it closer.
Closer.
It's one of those things that we did talk about, is we want people to express themselves, but the redundancy sometimes takes time from other people that want to speak about maybe other subjects. And that's one of the things that we've got to hopefully clarify this, so that people can come and speak within the, within the agendas.
I mean, I, I see, honestly, that where there's confusion, because we have policy 203.2, that says recognition of visitors and visitor input on agenda items only. And then we have policy 206, which is kind of confusing.
I agree.
It seems to leave the door open for input on-
That's one of the things that we were talking about.
Things that are not on the agenda.
I agree, and I think things have been confusing since way back when I first got on the board, you know, five years ago, or whatever it is now. And that's why I had recommended way back then, having some sort of a brochure to clarify, you know, how people, what people need to do, what the process or protocol is for when they want to speak just on visitor input, to say, that was an awesome concert last night, or, you know, want to just give us some input, or maybe we don't know about, something about jerseys, and they just want to give us a heads up about jerseys, or, you know, for visitor input. But yet, if they want to be on the agenda, how do they get on the agenda? And again, I do think that that, that needs some, you know, I do believe that the board chair needs to be able to use her own discretion on whether or not those things get on the agenda. But for visitor input, I do think that it would be okay if people want to take one or two minutes and just, you know, talk to us about the topic they feel is important, and then, you know, move on.
I disagree, Randy.
So I guess, I guess I'm just wondering what the rest of the board is thinking about visitor input versus getting on the agenda on a, for a certain topic? Do you feel that it needs to be, for visitor input, it needs to be specifically agenda items? Or do you feel like it can be a topic of the individual's choosing, but with specific guidelines of a minute or two minutes?
Well, I think we, in the past, we've had the three-minute rule, and we've had complaints on that. So we want to limit to a third of what we used to give people?
Well, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying, you know, a minute or two, you know, I'm just throwing out numbers. What do people want to do? I guess the main question is, are we going to stick to agenda items? Because, like you said, it is confusing between the two different policies. Are we sticking to agenda items only? What is the, what's the consensus here of the board?
How many people are getting turned down at every meeting, or that aren't able to speak? Are we getting five requests, 10? How many requests on average do we get?
No, I mean, up until, you know, the last, you know, six to eight months with critical race theory and masks, we haven't really ever had people requesting to speak on topics. This last go-around, there was only one request. Sometimes, you know, it's been like maybe three. So I wouldn't say that it's a lot.
Sure.
I think in my experience as a board chair, it's helpful to have people make those requests, and if it's not on a specific agenda item, then at least we can reach out to them and say, you know, maybe this is an issue that you need to talk to, you know, this specific person or that specific person. And then, you know, if you can point them in the right direction and get questions answered that way, maybe it doesn't need to be addressed to the whole board.
Seems reasonable.
Or if you can get it to a point where it's like, okay, it can't, it's not on the agenda for this time, but let's talk about it further, maybe put it on for the next time, then maybe other people get notice, and, you know, they would show up and give input too. So, but I think I come from a place where I like the opportunity for notice and to have a discussion, and I don't like being surprised on things-
Preparation.
-because then we don't have maybe the right information or facts to answer their questions anyway.
Yep.
That's my two cents.
I'm kind of curious of the question here. For starters, the board book is made up by the board chair and the superintendent. If there's anyone requesting, they're either going to come to you or the superintendent. If it's, if it's something put on the agenda, it's on the agenda. There's nothing questioned there.
Well, that's where the form comes in too, because it has their contact information, where we can follow up, and I have followed up with people.
So is the form being utilized for when they, when they want to speak for visitor input, and the same form is being used when they want to be on the actual agenda?
Yep, it's just one, one form, right, Stacy?
Correct.
Yep, just one form.
But that's not, that's not what our policy says. Our policy says that the form would be used if you were requesting to put a topic on the agenda, and then you fill out the form. And that's still no guarantee that it will get on the agenda, or not get on the agenda, whether you're somebody of the public, or even a board member. And as far as agenda items only, I never was for that. That's not the way the MSBA policy read. We've deviated from the MSBA policy. All of our prefaces say we recognize the value of public participation, and we encourage discussion by people. And just because something's not on the agenda does not mean that it's not important, it's not interesting, that somebody in the public might have something to bring to the board's attention. And just as you have said, Brandy, it might be something very complimentary, that they want to have the whole board to hear, not, not just contact one or two people or an administrator. And people don't just have questions to be answered. And people don't just have questions to be answered, they have comments that they want the full board to hear and understand. And I, I, I watch and I listen to school board meetings across the country, in our state, um, districts that are way bigger than ours, and, and many, many, many do have uh, visitor input on any topic. I don't think that we should be uh, strong-headed to think that, that just because it's not on a, on an agenda, that, that we control, that it's not, it's not important to be said or to be heard. And to say, if somebody wants to speak on the same topic at multiple meetings over weeks or months, to me, that's unreasonable to, to limit that to, because on one topic, there are so many facets, so many different parts of it, that's why you have chapters in a book, because on one topic or something, there's many different things you can say, and you can only say so much in three minutes.
Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of that time, so we need to be efficient with doing the work of the board.
And I've watched large districts in Minnesota, District 194 and Anochanapan, and they do have visitor input on any topic, and their meet, and they have larger populations than we do.
That's irrelevant.
It works just fine.
They do have, they do have that policy, and I have watched those as well, and it's become a circus.
That's, that's a matter of opinion.
With the last seven months. No, it's a circus. You, I mean, I've seen these people come, we've seen it at our board, we've been called communists, we've been called all kinds of names here, okay? And it's not fun.
It's not allowed. If that, the, the board chair should gavel somebody down if they
And she does.
Start doing that. And so that's, decorum can be upheld uh, by, by a board chair or somebody in charge of the meeting. You can keep decorum.
And Polly, now MSBA suggests that you don't let people talk one week and then come back the next week. You don't open it up for things that are not on the agenda. They have changed their policy slightly
Slightly.
Over the last ten years. But they do not open it up to carte blanche, that anybody can come and talk about anything. It's disruptive, it's disruptive to the board.
You know, it's uh, that's a matter of opinion, and MSBA uh, I, their, that policy about only visitor input is still not in their model policy. And I'll tell you what, I think we're forgetting, as board members, and MSBA's forgetting, and the NSBA are forgetting, we represent the public and the people, and, and
I'm going to ask that people hold their applause, please?
If they have something to say
We, we know who we represent, Polly.
It's disruptive to the meeting, and I'm trying to exercise decorum.
We are elected by the people, and if they wanna come and speak to us
Do you think anyone sitting at this table under, doesn't understand that?
Well, and I'm going to ask, what, what are we looking for?
People are feeling censored, and I agree with them.
Director Sorokin, I'm trying to exercise decorum at this meeting.
Right, good.
Um, what is the policy committee looking for?
Clarification, because like Matt said, there, it does, it does say separate things. You know, one says um, on agenda items only, and the other one does, doesn't reflect that. And I guess what, what I am looking, what I, what I would be comfortable with is if, you know, back when the Evlith Gilbert Board was the Evlith Gilbert Board, um, we did have visitor input, and people were allowed to sign up with the board chair about ten, you know, five, 10 minutes before the, the meeting. But they have to state, you know, what they wanna talk about, so it's not a total surprise. So my thought is, let's get back to that. Let's do, let's do visitor input, let people talk for a, a, you know, short period of time, have guidelines for it. But if people wanna get on to um, the agenda itself, that's what the form is going to be used for. And then you have the discretion of deciding whether or not that's something that we need to put on the agenda, or if they need to be directed to somebody else to speak, you know, have a conversation. That's just, that's my, that's my thought.
The only, the only thing that I say, when you open it up for somebody coming 10 minutes before, you get this onslaught of people that start to control the visitor input at the beginning, and they, they're, they're not guiding us in any way but in, in their way of thought. And there's nothing wrong with listening to people. A great example is in, at the Gilbert's uh, Media Center, we had an open mic, and it got quite nasty. And that was a, an open mic where people actually signed up before, is that not cra, correct Stacy?
I don't, I don't know if I recall that. I think that we, that was at the listening session here.
No, there was one in Gilbert.
There was one in Gilbert. It was not an open mic, it was, I think it just got out of hand.
Yeah, I think that just got out of hand. I don't think people signed up beforehand, but that out of hand, in these political times, is what concerns me, that you could have a rush of 50 people coming in, and if we give them each a minute even, that's a whole other hour out of the business of the board that
I get it. But I guess what I was thinking
How about just having two different forms? And, and I do think, I mean, they are two completely different things. One is, I want to address the board, and the other is, I'd like the board to consider, or the chair to consider putting this on the agenda, and not, they, they're
I'll make a motion that we send this back to the policy committee, and they come back with two separate forms, or look at the MSBA um, policy book, and get it more precise so that we, people know what, what they have to fill out, and what their obligation is to the board, and the board's obligation to them.
And all of
So there's a motion.
Support.
Is there support?
I'll support that.
Support by Anderson, discussion.
Okay, more discussion. So our policy
Wait, can, wait Polly, can you let Mr. Anderson go first?
Okay, sure.
We all got this last week, as an email from MSBA, and it's school board meeting, public comment procedure, and uh, model policy. And, you know, it, it gives us some guidelines. And it does say um, where they talk about um, they have to abide by the public comment procedure, they have to be, there's qualifications that they have, that we should probably look at, so that they can speak to us. Uh, there's five of them listed. Um, if there's an organization or a group, there's only one person that speaks. Persons who wish to address, it says there should be a specific item, agenda item. That, this is a recommendation from um, from MSBA, and it also does have a recommendation that there is a timeline. So, you know, if we bring this back and we hash it out, and maybe get the two, two forms, maybe we'll clear up the, the problems.
I, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I'd also like the, you know, our board members to think about whether or not they would be okay with um, you know, if we did open it up for however many minutes on an, on an item that's not an agenda item, we can also put guidelines on, you know, there's five people that get to speak a night, they get two minutes. You know, if, we could put specifications on it as well. So I mean, well, maybe we can just talk about that in the policy committee meeting then.
I guess I would, I hate to have something the night of, because then you don't get ambushed or surprised on something you wouldn't have the answer for, if it wasn't on the agenda. You know, we'd like to have a little time to prepare, so like a night of sign up kinda makes me leery a little bit, but um
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm with you. I think it's, you know, at least to have folks sign up and let the chair know what they wanna talk about, and
They can prepare themselves for the topic, and maybe research and find the answer, and have it be a, a time well spent, two or three minutes where they can get their, their problem or solution handled.
Agreed. Well, we've got a motion, and Well, I haven't had a chance for my discussion yet, please? So, our policy now, only references of, in official form created by the district, or if you want to have agendas placed on, items are placed on the agenda, okay? So there never was a form to be filled out, and that's where I think some of the, not confusion, but the frustration and the confusion of people have, have come, because our policy doesn't say that, just for visitor input, you had to fill out a form. I do support a signup sheet, that's very typical, so you got, you've got people, okay, you know, here's one, two, and three, be ready to come to the podium, and, and what's your subject? But you know, re, in reality, when have we had 50 people, other than our open forum, which was that, that was what it was for? It was a listening session. We've never had that problem, and again, it's the discretion of the board, if somebody keeps repeating themselves, to keep decorum, to keep, you know, on topic. And uh, again, agenda items only, I hope that will be stricken, because there's certainly, like I said before, there's, there's a time and a place for other things than just agenda items. We aren't, we aren't experts at everything, and a lot of people in the public agree, that could, that could give us a lot of good information on things that we, we don't know about.
All right, well, there's a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries nine to zero. Um, 6.2, policies that must be reviewed annually, just noting the first of the three readings for policy 410, 414, 415, 506, 515, 522, 616, and 806. Can I get a motion to recognize the first of three readings on those policies?
I'll move.
Support.
Motion by Addy, support by Director Lotteger. Any discussion?
It's 514, you said 515, just to
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
Okay. Uh, motion passes 6.3 is MSBA, M A S A policy revisions, the first of three readings. Um, those are policies 102, 406, 413, 425, 501, 503, 507, 515, 524, and 534. There are motions to acknowledge the first of three readings.
So
Who was that?
Take your pen.
Tamero? And support by Anderson. Any further discussion?
Now, we will be voting on these policies as redlined in the packet?
As, we'll be voting on them as updated by the MSBA as a model policy.
Okay.
Correct.
Any further discussion?
I just that there's, with all these policies, there's so much information here. I know we have two more readings, but uh, it's a lot to absorb, and, and, and even if we pass, pass them for the first reading or the second reading, that doesn't mean that in the third reading, we all should have been well-versed with them, if there's something that we find that we are suggesting to change or delete, so um, that's why I abstain for the first one, I'll abstain again, because there's just so much, I haven't had time to formulate opinions and make suggestions, so.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
Motion passes
Eight zero one.
Eight zero one. Um, before we get into administration items, I know Mr. Speltz came in a little bit late, so he just wanted to kind of say a couple of things about the Baldrica Learning Lab.
Thank you for this opportunity, I won't hold you up. I'm assuming that it passed? Is that, is that true? Have you guys made
We didn't even have to vote on it, but we just took a little time to acknowledge it and acknowledge the Baldrica's contribution.
Perfect, thank you, and I wanna do the same. The Baldrica Learning Lab, the Baldrica family has been huge in the entire area, whether it be Virginia Evlith Gilbert, everybody knows how much they have contributed to the music side of our area, and I appreciate the donations from Ben Deutsch and Steve Genolini, um, members of the, of Virginia High School that went to school with Tommy Baldrica, and they were very excited to do this, this was a great opportunity, um, a real neat story, and I appreciate the support for, for, from the board for being able to do this. Their, their contributions have been absolutely endless, and we just really appreciate this opportunity to do this, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More, more of these are coming, so be ready, we have a, a whole bunch of these dedications coming, so hang in there, stay tuned.
We're, we're ready.
We're looking forward to it.
Stay tuned, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, agenda item 7.1 is consider approval of purchase agreement of property between the City of Evlith and Rock Ridge Public Schools. Jeff Carey on that one.
Good evening. So if you're from the old Evlith Gilbert Board, you're probably wondering to yourself, when you saw the board agenda, why is this on here again? Didn't we already go through this? So I gave you a little visual here of what's going on. So back when we were still independent, the Evlith Gilbert Board did sign a purchase agreement with the City of Evlith for that piece of property that the Laurentian Elementary is sitting on. However, there's two little numbers on that map that you, that's in front of you, the number one and the number two, those are little parcels that are attached to 1404, which is currently owned by VIDA. At the time, uh, the City of Evlith felt that they could get VIDA to convey those two parcels and make it one large parcel for the elementary. However, when they started digging into it, the uh, those parcels are tied to the 1404, which has a federal EDA loan on it, which they've had a hard time um, getting rid of, so to speak. So anyway, fast forward 18 months, here we are, still don't officially own that property, so my suggestion to them was, let's uh, divide that into two, we'll, we'll purchase the piece of property that the school is sitting on, and then when they get that EDA stuff cleared up, parcels one and two, we'll do in a separate purchase agreement. Does that kinda make sense? So anyway, this one that you're voting on now is uh, within the red circle with the exception of uh, number one and two, the yellow areas, but it's everything else, it's where the school is sitting right now, okay?
So we're voting on to purchase one and two?
No, you're not, you're, you're voting to buy everything else except one and two. The, the previous purchase agreement had one and two included in it, but the City of Evlith has not been able to obtain those two parcels, so we're, we're gonna do that at a later date.
I mean, one is pretty critical, because it's right between the academy and it's close to the athletic complex.
Correct. And, and we, it is not my intent, I'm not telling you that we're never going to get those, it's just, they're tied up with that EDA stuff right now, and we just need to own a piece of property.
But right now, it's just to finalize the deal basically on the elementary school.
Where the elementary school is sitting, yep.
You don't anticipate any title work issues, because we're, built the building there already, that land that we don't own?
No, because we had uh, we had permits in place and easements from the city that allowed us to build on those.
And so what is the purchase price of one?
Forty thousand.
And that's what was agreed to earlier?
Yes.
I'm totally confused. So number one, we have a number one here, and number two, does this red line go off this map all the way down to the, the, and how many acres is there?
It's approximately forty acres.
Forty acres.
Yeah, it was a thousand dollars an acre, correct? If I remember right?
Yep.
And we haven't purchased this before.
I thought this was a done deal.
We've purchased some land for forty thousand before, ninety acres or something, I don't know what it was.
I think we approved the purchase agreement, but we haven't
You, you guys, I get
Haven't executed it, obviously.
You started, you started, you, you did appro, approve the purchase agreement, but because of parcels one and number two that are within that parcel, the City of Evlith has not been able to obtain those two little parcels, therefore, we're redoing the purchase agreement that does not include one and two. Is that kinda clear?
Yep. I would make a motion to approve that.
I'll support.
So there's a motion by Director Yohan, support by Director Riordan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain. I don't understand it, but go ahead. I abstain.
Motion passes eight oh one.
I remember the discussion, Jeff, about that piece of property and
All right, so agenda item 7.2 is consider revision of the Rock Ridge Public Schools COVID-19 mitigation plan 21 dash 22, and just noting the change on page ones, is on page one, second paragraph, last sentence, this plan will be in effect in all district-owned facilities. Can I get a motion to revise? in all district-owned facilities. Can I get a motion to revise?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Schoberg, support by Anderson. Any discussion?
I just, and this is tied in with item seven point four on the agenda, and I don't know if now would be the appropriate time to say something, or if it would be then. But I guess all, all, all I would say is, it kind of surprised, I, I know myself, when we saw the draft lease from the City of Virginia for the Iron Trail Center, that that included some language that basically is, would implement the city COVID plan over ours. And I understand they're the owner of the building, but we are the tenant, and I have no problems with that. However, it seemed like neither of the athletic directors knew that this was put in there. Dr. Schmidt didn't know this was put in there.
He didn't see it.
We didn't see it until we're asked to approve it while the hockey seasons have started. And it just, I don't know, frankly, it, it seemed, from my perspective, to be a little underhanded. And we're partners. It didn't seem like something that, I mean, let's just be transparent, and let's have these discussions, and then we'll do what we have to do, which would have been this anyhow.
So what you're saying, Matt, there's masks on all district-owned property, but not in the defense center during games?
Correct.
So you want to bring?
Not in either of the hockey facilities.
Or tents.
And but that dictates a change that we're voting on now.
Or the golf.
Correct.
And maybe we can touch a little bit more on that when we vote on agenda item seven point four, but I'm glad that you brought that up because they are very much tied together. So at this point, there's a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Discussion, discussion.
Aye.
One more discussion.
Okay, so doesn't this boil down to, and I didn't get that in my packet, I know it's on Board Book, but anyhow, doesn't this boil down to, we can't control somebody else's buildings?
No, we got a, we're voting on seven point two, and we'll discuss that.
Right, and we'll discuss that more at seven point four.
Oh, okay, sorry. I guess I got confused when you.
So, motion, support, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
No.
Motion carries eight to one. Agenda item seven point. Thanks, Jeff. Three, consider the approval of the facilities use agreement between the City of Evolith and Rock Ridge Public Schools for the 2021-22 school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Yohan, support by Anderson. Discussion.
What's the basic premise of this, of these, both of these agreements here?
It's just the agreements that we use every year to rent hockey, or ice base, correct?
Yes.
And the, and the golf course, and the.
That was only though, this is, this is.
Hippodrome and the softball field.
Yes, they added that, correct.
Who negotiates this?
F, A D's.
They just give us a price and we pay it?
It's cheaper than last year.
So is that basically the same language? My thing is frozen. I haven't seen it before. I just asked the question, is basically our lease dollar amount, is that basically what this is in there? Are no other changes in language, or?
Not in the Evolith, not in the Evolith one.
Well, it's a full lease. It's the dollar amount and all the terms and conditions of the lease.
I know, I'm, I'm asking if there are any other changes besides the amount on this lease from the previous ones.
Means you're less hours, less hours. I mean, that was based on a dollar amount, was based on the hours used. I mean.
There's a certain, certain figure.
Three hundred hours, I think, is what it was, correctly?
Forty.
That was in Evolith.
Yeah.
But the Evolith one really didn't have any changes from last year, aside from the, maybe the hours and the dollars, but the fundamental underlying tenants of the agreement were the same.
Correct.
Okay, and so facilities, like, again, I can't read it, does this just include like the Hippodrome and the new convention center, or are these the?
They're independent of each other.
The golf courses too?
We're, we're seven point three.
This one just Evolith, okay, but this is a general question. So does this include the Evolith golf course, not just the Hippodrome? Any other?
And they added the, they added the baseball field as well. That's new, softball fields from, yeah. That's new for this year as well, because they never, there was never, we used them, but they never addressed them any other, any other documents. They included them this year.
Is this just for one year, or is this a two-year lease?
One year.
One year.
And we won't be using the new fields, the new softball or baseball fields yet?
It doesn't sound like it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries nine to zero. Seven point four is the consideration of the approval of the facilities use agreement between the City of Virginia and Rock Ridge Public Schools for the 2021-22 school year. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Yohan.
Support.
Support by Schoberg. Discussion.
I, I do have one question, and it's, the first paragraph of section one on the first page, apparently there's a typo or the, the last sentence says, "The timing and nature of tenants' occupancy shall be agreed upon by tenants," and then it just ends. No punctuation, no tenants what.
Yeah, I see that.
Oh, yeah.
It's on page one. Yep. The first paragraph under section one.
So I guess I, I, I would be comfortable just getting a clarification on that and to, um, to give the authority to the superintendent to look at that, and, and as, as long as it's within reason to agree to the entire lease rather than hold the whole thing up. If that works for Dr. Schmidt.
Well, yeah, I guess the question would be is, does it hold up anything if we either get clarification and bring it back to another board meeting, or do we need to allow Dr. Schmidt to act as our agent? I don't know if you can clarify that, Noel.
So in other words, that sentence there would tell me that, I mean, we, we have the first right, first right of how long we're going to occupy it from like October first to March or something, or is that what that means?
Doesn't mean anything how it's written.
I know.
And, members of the Board, what I would suggest, because there's obviously a missing part of that sentence, is to, if you're comfortable with it, to pass or not pass it, and then if it changes materially the paragraph, then we bring it back here, talk to the city, change the soil. If it doesn't materially impact the agreement, then I would leave it alone. If it does, then we'll have to talk to the city and we'll have to bring it back here. That's what I would suggest the Board does, but it's up to you.
I'm comfortable with that.
As am I.
I am too. So is there other discussion about any of the other terms of the agreement?
I guess I would just like to respond to the other guys on the Athletic Committee. I, I wasn't as surprised by that being in there amidst their building. There is two rinks of ice. They, they, they're going to be city employees that, you know, clean the, clean the arenas and work the canteens, work the concession that they're, that we're not going to have any control over their employees. So I can see, and COVID is obviously still very much around, that's going to be in every contract, I would think, that some sort of notation of how they're going to handle their COVID. So I didn't think it was that out of line for them to put that in there. My, my two cents.
And I agree with that. I would have just asked that they would have been a little more transparent with it and said, they obviously know what our policies are, and they would have just said, we're asking you to agree to something that goes directly against your policy, and then we would have done exactly what we did five minutes ago. That's my, my thought.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Seven point five, discuss status of salutatorian and valedictorian honors at Evolith Gilbert and Virginia High Schools.
Members of the School Board, before you enter into your discussion, what I would ask the Board to consider is to give us the two high schools some time to have a committee meet comprised of teachers, admin, students, and school board members can also be there as long as we don't get too many of them. To, I think this is a bigger issue beyond valedictorian and salutatorian, which you certainly can talk about, and you certainly can tell us how you want to do it, but this also goes to how do we recognize our top performing students beyond just those two positions? Because we have two different high schools that are merging together. We talked about it in one of our meetings, and the suggestion, and I'm here to tell you what the suggestion is, is they would like to have a committee meet, and have those different parties there, and have them talk about different ways they can recognize students, so it's beyond just those two. And they would consider that and talk about that, and then at some point, the committee will come back to you with what their recommendations are. So that's just the request from the group. It's up to you as far as what you want to do, but that is their suggestion.
What group is this, Noel? What group?
Say that again.
What group are you referring to?
I'm talking about a group that doesn't exist.
Right.
Well, you said, you said somebody suggested that we have this group. I thought she said a group suggested to have this group.
Okay, let me, let me back up. We have heard from individuals who would like to have a valedictorian and a salutatorian. It works differently at Virginia High School than at Evolith Gilbert High School. People are noticing that in one high school, there is a salutatorian, valedictorian, in the other high school that there is not. This has been the way it's been for a number of years. This is not new. Some individuals have asked that, why don't we have the same thing exist in both high schools? Fair question. We have also know that the two high schools are not identical right now. We know we'll have to work together to get to being identical. So we did talk about this topic in an admin meeting, principal's meeting, I meet with them once a week, and we talked about it. And their suggestion was, they believe this is bigger than just that, those two recognitions. So they are asking the Board to let them have some time so they can get a committee together, which would include students, get the student viewpoint, include teachers, get the teacher viewpoint, include parents, get the parent input, and some admin, and certainly we can have one or two board members join that committee, so they can talk about all of the different parts, how we're honoring our top achieving students. That's the background to it.
So the answer to my question was, this recommendation came from one or more of your admin meetings to form a group such as you described?
I think what he said is that the group isn't formed yet, and he's heard from individuals.
I understand that, but I did hear him say that it came up at an admin meeting, that that was a recommendation that we form a group, right?
Besides other individuals.
And other individuals, but, but, but the admin group also, right?
Yes. Now, keep in mind, it's normal for me to bring all sorts of different topics to the admin meeting. That's what we do. We talk about things, and so everybody knows what is going on. And so the, where the admin group, principal group, is just saying, this makes sense, that we think this through about the, how we're honoring all of the high achieving students. What's the best way to do that?
I'd support that.
I, I like the plan. I'd like to put a timeline on it, keep kind of kicking the can down the road here. I'd like to, you know, put this topic to bed at what, at some point here and just move on. So I think it's a good plan, just somewhat soon.
Can we have three months?
Let's say that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds good. Do you need anything more from the Board?
No.
And my comment would be that this committee or group that's formed, I, my suggestion would be that it would be people volunteering, volunteering themselves, not people being asked to be on this committee, whether it's staff or students or whatever. In other words, not handpicked people. I think if there's going to be a group like this, it should, and should be advertised, so everyone who might be interested would have a chance to be in, in this committee. Time is of the essence. I do agree with you, John. Like I said before, the grades start for, before any kind of shakedown, top ten or whatever. And I need, think we need consistency on both sides of the district. I think in fairness, we need consist, consistency. We've combined things before consolidation, many things, and this is another one that I think is important, one way or the other.
Well, we've got it going in the right direction, so thank you, Noel.
Thanks.
Seven point six, consider nominating a school board member as the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission representative.
What is this, what is the Arrowhead Regional Development?
Matt, was this the one that you wanted to look into and?
Yeah, and I, I, I checked into it. Basically, there's one spot open. The incumbent who's in that spot is eligible to be reappointed. Still, that memo is a little bit unclear when it says if more than two, or I believe it should say if two or more indicate a willingness, then there's a vote. At, at this time, I'm not interested in any kind of nomination.
Okay.
Is there anybody else on the Board that might be interested?
I don't.
Well, I would entertain a motion if anyone else wants to be nominated for the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission.
Maybe just take no action if nobody's interested.
Correct.
Okay.
Meeting announcements, the next regular board meeting will be Monday, December thirteenth at six PM at the Spectrum Health Building, fourteen oh five Progress Parkway in Virginia. And next, we're going to go into a closed session to receive an update on the teacher contract.
Can I, can I just say one thing about eight point one? I know it's minute, but could we rename, finally rename the Spectrum Health Building as our administrative building, formerly known as the Spectrum Health Building? Finally, Noel?
Sorry.
Can we rename the Spectrum Health Building to the, the administrative building?
Rock Ridge Admin.
Because that's what it's going to be?
Yeah.
Rock Ridge.
Okay, Rock Ridge Administrative Building.
The old Spectrum Health.
Formerly known as, yeah, formerly.
Okay.
For a price, I'd be in favor of naming it just about anything.
Well, for the right price, we could name it the Schoberg Building.
Schoberg.
That won't happen.
Talk to, talk to Willie.
Stacy, the other thing that's happening on December thirteenth is truth and taxation.
Oh, that's right. So at this time, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, section thirteen D point zero three, I move to go into a closed session to receive an update teach, on teacher contract negotiations. Is there a second? I support. Second by Lotteger.
I will second.
All those in favor of moving into closed session signify your vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, and at this time, we will adjourn into closed session at a seven twenty-six.